This conference will now be recorded.
I'm just waiting for Channel 79 that just came back on. All right. Good evening, everybody. This is a regularly scheduled meeting of the Town of Darien. Everybody put on mute, please. Everybody mute. Dan, Barb. Thank you. Okay. Good evening again, everybody. This is a regularly scheduled zoning Board of Appeals meeting for the Town of Darien on Wednesday, September 23rd, 2020. Before we get started tonight, you guys, I'd like to take an opportunity in a brief minute to acknowledge our good and trusted ally Chuck DeLuca, whose last zoning board meeting is tonight. And I just want to take this opportunity to thank him for his many years, in fact, seventeen, who's counting, Chuck. Seventeen years of service to the Town of Darien. He's been an invaluable asset to the Town of Darien, a true friend, and actually a very good client. And for all of those reasons, I'd like to thank Chuck and on behalf of the Board and the Chair Mike Neder. I would like to thank you very much, and we wish you the best of luck in the future, sir. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Jeff. I've enjoyed all of it. I've enjoyed working with all of my fellow Board members and staff. So I know that leaving that the Board is in very good hands. So thanks again.
Ma'am, it's our pleasure, sir. Thank you so much. And anytime you would like the floor this evening, you feel free to step on me anytime, sir. Okay, thanks so much for giving me that opportunity. So the general is a little bit different with virtual meetings. So if everybody could remain on mute until they're called upon or they have something to say, that's perfectly fine. Otherwise, I get feedback because I am on the call on the phone. I am identified as caller one on your screen. Otherwise, I'm obviously on video. I will go in order of the way the legal notice was posted. And that brings me to calendar number sixteen, 2020, the application of Daniel Conlin, excuse me, on behalf of Lucille Story to allow the construction of a one-story addition at a property known as, pardon me, 11 Raymond Height. Mr. Conlin, are you with us? I see you.
I am indeed.
I would also, thank you very much, sir. I would also like to remind everybody that we'd like to keep these application presentations at ten minutes. Certainly, if it goes a little bit over, we're going to allow that. But I would really like to stick to the timeframe, ten minutes per application. They seem to be pretty straightforward this evening, so there shouldn't be much of a difficulty adhering to that request. Thanks very much. Mr. Conlin, the floor is yours, sir.
Very good. So I had a conversation with Fred this afternoon, and I guess he's going to handle my slides for him. We had a PowerPoint presentation. Is that how this is going to work? There it is.
There you go.
I guess Fred, if you just sort of cycle through them as I say, go, I think I can get through this pretty quickly. So we can move on to my next slide. Okay, so these are the existing site conditions. This is our survey that shows existing structure. It's a very small lot. It's a seventy-nine-hundred-square-foot lot and a half-acre zone. As you can see, virtually, the entire structure is constructed in the front yard setback on this lot. The front yard setback is unusually deep because we have a very narrow right-of-way. So there's an added setback from the center line of the street. Next slide. Okay, so we're in an R1/2 zone. We have city water and city sewer. We have no wetlands issues or no flood zone issues. Next slide. This slide references the existing conditions plan, and you'll see all of our work is going to be confined to the first floor. And you'll see that in the first floor plan on the right of this sheet, in the rear of the building, there's a small approximately five-by-ten addition that was done that houses a little mudroom and a powder room. That's going to be removed and absorbed into our proposed addition as we go forward. You can kind of see in the little rendering on the left-hand side, that little bump on the back of the house is going to be removed and absorbed into our new addition. No work on the second floor and nothing, no new basement will have a crawl space under the structure. Next slide. Just some photos for reference. For those of you who didn't get a chance to go out and see it, it's just a small gable structure. There was a porch that at some point in the past was enclosed into a three-season room on the front. And then a photo of the rear of the house, again, you see that little bump that we're replacing because it's quite fairly constructed. It's not even on piers. It's on pressure-treated posts. Next slide, please. Boy, I don't know what happened here. At any rate, so this slide somehow distorted, but our proposed conditions indicate the new footprint that we're doing to the rear of the house. And so we're before you today to get a front yard setback variance for an addition that's entirely to the rear of the existing structure, which is a little bit unusual. And sorry for the distortion on this slide, but the proposed addition is shown in this orientation to the left on the slide. Let's go to the next slide. I think I have a clearer way to show this. Okay, so our structure is almost entirely on the front yard setback, and there's no way for us to add anything to this building without a variance because of that particular geometry. Next slide. Okay, and then this slide shows our proposed conditions. So the drawing to the right is the first floor plan. You can see the purpose of our addition is we want to add a first-floor sleeping room and full bath to the house. The owner is in her eighties, and she would like to age in place in the structure. The existing stairs are quite narrow and quite steep, and she can no longer feels comfortable managing those. So we're building essentially a first-floor sleeping area. The building is entirely compliant with the regulations, with the exception of that tiny shaded triangle that you see in the lower-left-hand corner of the addition on the proposed plan. So we're asking for approximately seventeen square feet of area to be built within the setbacks. And the most relief we need from the required setback is about 3.7 feet to that one corner. Next slide. I don't know what's happened to the slides. Unfortunately, the... Something looks funny. It was fine on my drawing, but the elevations are not showing up on the slides. I'm not sure why that is. Hopefully, the commission members have paper copies in front of them. And you can see we've got a simple one-story addition to the rear of the structure. So we're going to match the existing first-floor elevation. It's going to be a crawl space foundation below. And again, it's a single story, so it's not going to be towering in relation to the existing structure or the neighbors. Next slide, please. And so summary, we're going to knock down that one poorly constructed addition. We're going to make a new one-story addition with a full bath and first-floor sleeping area for our client who'd like to stay in the house for a while and is having difficulty with the stairs. The existing interior stairs, second floor, are steep, as we mentioned. And we're also, as part of this, reconfiguring the exterior stairs. So there's a little bit easier access from the garage and driveway area. Next slide, please. So again, the variance that we're seeking is to allow us to build in the front yard. The closest point of our addition is going to be sixty-one-point-three feet from the street. Sixty-five feet are required. The existing structure is twenty-eight feet from the street. And again, there's just a little blow-up here in the plan of that little triangular area that's driving the variance request. We conform in all other respects with the regulations in terms of height, coverage, and side and rear yard setbacks. Next slide, please. The hardships we're citing is that we have an existing non-conforming lot of seventy-nine-hundred-square-feet in a zone where twenty-one thousand seven eighty are required. We have an existing non-conforming structure that's twenty-eight feet from the street, where sixty-five are required, and we have an existing deficient right-of-way, which being only twenty feet wide has the effect of increasing that required front yard setback. And with that, I will take your questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Conlin. I appreciate your presentation and the exact timing. You know, we've had these applications on Raymond Height, so I clearly understand your hardship with regard to the right-of-way. Do any other Board members have any questions?
I don't have a question, Jeff, but I'd like to say one thing. In the seventeen years that I've been on the Board, I don't ever remember seeing a request for a front yard setback variance for the rear of a building. So I think this is very unusual, and I think, again, this is one of the simplest applications I've seen in a long time, and I'm very much in favor of, granted.
I couldn't agree with you more, sir. Quite frankly, I think it could have been accomplished administratively, but that's not my decision. Okay, no questions from other Board members? Okay, thank you very much. Barb, please. Barb, take it off from you.
What's the total coverage with the new... I know you're taking off the rear porch and rebuilding it, and there's a minor addition. Do you know what the total coverage is of the new house? Is it within...
I do, yeah. We're seventeen-point-seven percent coverage where twenty is required.
Thanks.
I have a question, Jeff. Have you received all the feedback from the neighbors? Is there any...
We've notified the neighbors and received no comments.
No comments. Okay.
Okay, any other Board members? No? Okay. Is there anybody from the public that would like to be heard on this application? And I'm going to take that as a no. And with no further question or comment, I am going to close this hearing. Thank you very much, Mr. Conlin. Well done, sir. Appreciate your time. Okay, give me a minute to get my next packet. Okay, oops, slide over here. Okay, moving on to application seventeen, 2020, the application of Robert Metzger and Neil Houck, architects on behalf of Jeffrey Brown, to allow the existing residence to remain until the proposed replacement residence is completed. Subject property is at 26 Peach Hill Road, Darien, Connecticut. Mr. Houck, Mr. Brown, you're flooring.
Thank you. Good evening. So I'm Neil Houck, Neil Houck Architects here in town, and I'm joined by Rob Metzger, my associate this evening. We are representing Jeff and Kukul Brown, who purchased 26 Peach Hill Road several years ago, have been living in that structure.
Time out, Neil. Time out, Neil. Just one second. Sorry, stop. Rob Metzger, would you go on mute, please? I'm getting feedback from you. Thank you. Perfect. Thank you very much. Yeah, thank you. Neil, go ahead. Sorry, sir.
Okay, sorry about that.
No, not a problem.
The existing house, as we've designed it, conforms to all of the zoning regulations, all the area and bulk regulations. We have retained the services of Doug DeVesta from DeVesta Civil Engineering Associates to provide civil engineering for the project. There are some wetlands at the eastern side of the property, though we are far enough away from them with our work that they really don't come into play here. Doug has been before the EPC for preliminary review back on August 12th. That went very well and was given approval at the time. So he's coming back for the formal meeting this month. He also has applied to the Planning and Zoning Commission because we are doing some minor regrading work within the twenty-five-foot setback from the property lines. But once again, we don't anticipate any problems there. The lot is approximately three acres in size in a two-acre zone. And the way we've designed it, it slopes from a high point on the extreme west side down to a low point on the extreme east side. So we cited it further up the hill and have completed all sorts of extensive grading and drainage plans. The client, our client, would like to live in the existing house while the new house is constructed and fully agrees to demolish the existing house within thirty days of moving into the new house. In fact, their plans call for a level playing field to be constructed and a layer of trees to be planted, essentially where the existing house is. So that if we left it, it would conflict with our plans anyway. If Fred would be so kind as to put the first slide up, I think I can go through this pretty quickly. Yeah, there we go. So what you see here is there's a shared driveway that comes up from Peach Hill Road. And as it turns to the left there, it enters a neighbor's property. But the driveway is shown in blue. The existing parking area, you can see to the extreme right-hand side there is in blue. The existing house is in green. And then we have proposed parking and driveway in red, and the proposed new house is in yellow. So if you then go, Fred, to the, not the next slide, but the last slide, I think, yeah, that's the one that's appropriate. So the areas marked one, two, and three are ample areas for construction vehicles to park during the construction process. So we feel that the site is plenty big enough to handle not only the comings and goings of our clients in the existing house, but also all the construction vehicles that will construct the new house. And I think that's really it. It's a fairly simple application. I know in the past, there's been a precedent to accept many of these applications, and we feel that, you know, that there's no reason for you not to accept this one, so.
I appreciate your comments, Mr. Houck. Okay, I have a couple of questions because we... This is, I'm sorry, Vic, did you want to say something? Go ahead.
Go first, I'll go after you.
Okay, thank you, sir. I just want to point out that, yes, in fact, we have seen applications of this nature. And in fact, this is very similar to an application that we did, in fact, approve down in the Bay some years ago. And the similarities that I recalled, and I had the application pulled and I have reviewed that, is the shared driveway situation. Has, obviously, the neighbor has been noticed and they have spoken. Is the neighbor in agreement with this? Is there any problem with the shared driveway situation with the neighbor?
None whatsoever. In fact, the Browns are proposing to really do some work on the asphalt drive, which currently floods down when it comes in off Peach Hill Road. So as part of this project, they're proposing to do some grading and drainage work to alleviate that flooding. So the neighbor is very happy about that.
Understood. How long do you think this construction project will take?
I would estimate about a year, about twelve months.
Okay, very good. And you've... Okay, I'll leave it at that. Thank you very much. Vic, go ahead, please.
Hi, Neil. Has your client explored other options, livable options than just staying in the house? I mean, is there other options open?
I don't think they seriously have. I mean, they have two small children, one who has special needs and goes to the Royal School. And Jeff works from home now because of the pandemic. So I think it would be most convenient for them to just stay put.
Yeah, okay. And I guess it just gets a little hairy for me. If you're pointing out pink driveway number two, where some of the construction people are going to park, that's essentially in the front yard of the existing house.
It's, well, there's ample room there. We're just pointing out that those are three areas where, you know, plenty of vehicles could park.
Yeah, I just get safety concerns when it gets this close. That's all.
Well, okay, so maybe that should really be, that number two should be taken a little further south and east. You know, there's no reason that they can't park there temporarily.
Yeah, and particularly when they're alone in the household, it gets a little scary.
Yeah, no, agreed, agreed, yeah.
Vic, we had that safety issue down in the Bay in the similar application that I referred to earlier, and we had them install a link fence. If that's something that you feel is appropriate, I don't really have a problem with asking if the owner would stipulate to that. What do you think, Vic? Do you want it?
That's fine. We did deny one on Mansfield. I don't know if you remember. They wanted to stay in the house, and it was just so, we're just so close to the existing house, the construction. And there were little kids in the house, and the playground set was in the front yard. I mean, it just gets a little hairy when it's this close, little kids. And oh, by the way, I'd point out that the pandemic is another part of your hardship, that I wouldn't want to go to a hotel or rent a house or sleep in somebody's bed or anything like that. I'd want to stay in my own house, so.
Yeah, we noted that in the item K.
You did? Okay.
Yeah, 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 they did. And with respect to that, Vic, the way the existing house is laid out, you know, for their children, one of which does require special needs, it's going to be difficult for them to find a rental place that can accommodate that type of... Fred, what are you doing? That kind of need. So I read the item K. I kind of agree with it. It's an unusual time of everyone's life, so it's an unusual hardship relative to the pandemic and so forth. But, you know, I'm kind of okay with it. With that, I will... Neil, are you done? I don't want to step on you. Are you done?
No, unless you have further questions for me, I'm done.
That's where I'm going, sir. Any other questions from the Board at this time?
Yeah, I have a question. I've historically voted against these for a variety of reasons, and I'm looking for a reason to vote in favor of this because, as you all know, we need a hardship as defined by the law as opposed to one of convenience. You know, COVID, COVID might be a way to sort of smooth the path to get this thing done. But Neil, the house that's being built, I mean, it seems fairly substantial and fairly expensive to me to have this done. What is the square footage of the house that's being constructed?
I think that's approximately eight thousand square feet, somewhere between seventy-five hundred and eight.
Okay, so it's going to cost a lot of money to do that. I'm just wondering, why don't they just rent a place, as most other people do, for several months or even a year while the house is being constructed? I mean, is it because they don't want to? Or is there some other reason that you can use to justify having two houses on one lot?
I think it has to do with their wanting to hunker down during this COVID-19 situation that we're going through. And also having the kids in the local schools, you know, it's much less disruptive for them.
I mean, we denied this on Middlesex Road up by Ox Ridge. I remember denying that one with a majority of the Board. And we apparently permitted one down in the Bay. So there seems to be a difference in what the precedents are if, in fact, we have one. But one of my concerns, and I'm not prejudging this, I truly not. I want to listen to what everybody else on the Board has to say. But, I mean, if we allow this, how can we deny any other applicant who wants to do the very same thing? I mean, is this going to be something that we allow from now on? Or is there some special circumstance here that would allow us to do this without committing to doing it in the future? And that's my issue on this.
What is the issue from a zoning perspective? Because there'll never be a situation where there are two livable houses operating at the same time.
Well, we've had applications for it, so there is some precedence for people wanting to do it, who could do it, having two houses, you know, within the buildable area. But, you know, we need a traditional hardship to allow a variance. And, you know, there's no hardship here. I mean, let's face it. It's, the question is, you know, are we going to do this? And, you know, I'm leaving the Board. So, I mean, it's what the Board wants to do in the future. That, to me, is the important issue based upon what we've done in the past.
Okay, this is Vic.
Time out, time out, time out. Rob, I need you to go on mute again, please.
Yeah, I was just going to make one quick comment to Chuck, which was that, you know, not that it's particularly unique, but it is a big site. It's a two-acre zone, and it's almost three acres. And I think that if there's some precedent to be set as to, you know, what lots this kind of application would be appropriate on, I think the bigger the lot, the more space for staging and parking, the better, so.
Jeff, can I ask something? Do they even need to tear down the original house? I mean, from a coverage standpoint, if you left the original house, what would the total coverage be? With the new house at eight thousand square feet and the old house?
Yeah, I can tell you that in a second. There's plenty of coverage, though. It's not an issue. You could have both structures and be well under the coverage. But you'll have two kitchens.
Yeah.
We want to tear it down. It's not an option.
So total coverage with both structures would be six-point-four percent, and twenty is allowed.
Both structures, six-point-four, okay.
Right, the proposed house is four-point-three.
Understood, sir. Chuck, we did not allow two kitchens, as an example, in the Bay. I don't mean to be repeating the same application in the Bay. It's just very similar with regard to the shared driveway. That's why I pulled that particular application. Now, we did not allow them to have two kitchens on the site at any one time. If that's a stipulation that you would appreciate having in there, I don't have much of a problem with that. We've done that before.
All right, well, I guess my issue in the past has been, you know, what if there's construction delays? What if there's the financing, it turns out, not to be available? What if they are, for whatever reason, unable to finish it? Then we have one house and then one incomplete house. And, you know, that was always one of the things that, sort of, you know, one of the issues that I thought about in the past when, you know, we denied applications. I don't remember voting on the Rothen Bay one. I probably wasn't there that evening. But in any event, so, I mean, to me, it's just an issue of precedent. And again, it's what the Board wants to do in the future. So I guess what I'm saying is, if the Board is comfortable with it, and I'm not going to be there anyway, and you want this to be the precedent, then I'll vote in favor of it.
Hey, Chuck.
I understand. Go ahead, please.
Can you think of a hardship in the case of constructing, having, living in the existing house and constructing a new one? What could be a hardship? I mean, safety, I think, is one of them.
Safety is one, but it would be safer if they weren't there, I suspect, right? So the only thing I can think of to justify this is COVID.
Yeah, that's what I thought, too.
And then maybe that's what you want to rely on, because it's not going to pop up again, I think. So maybe this could be an issue of first and last impression.
Well, from your lips to God's ears, and I'd also like to reiterate that they do have a child with special needs. And I, you know, as a parent, I mean, my children are grown, but as a parent, I'd hate to, I'd have difficulty relocating a child that requires special needs. I know these are odd hardships, but these are odd times. Excuse me. Barb, please go. Excuse me, Barb, please go.
Well, I mean, as a realtor, I can tell you, it's the worst rental market we've seen in 50 years. I mean, for them to find a rental that works for them is going to be, is going to be tough. You know, that doesn't qualify as a hardship, but I'll tell you, I mean, this makes a lot of sense to me. I appreciate the precedent, but I think it could be an excuse for these times.
I, I don't disagree. I would also remind the board that we don't set precedent. We set history, but we don't set precedent. Every application is different in its own unique way. So if we approve a, this application as an example for a three-acre site on Peach Hill Road, that doesn't mean that we're going to approve an application for a one-and-a-half-acre site on Horseshoe Road. So, but I totally appreciate the whole precedent thing. I've struggled with that for 18 years, Chuck, got you beat by a year, sir. In any event, but I do, I do want to remind the board that we are not bound by principle going forward. But I certainly appreciate his concern. Dan, comments, questions, concerns?
Jeff, I'm, it's Vic again.
I thought we were going to come to the case when we do the decisioning, right? As a discussion amongst us. I have no question to the applicants.
Okay.
I have seen the problem.
Please go.
I know, I know the, you know, the layout. And I also don't see any concern with the parking, because even the shared driveway is big enough for use, for parking. You know, so I have no concerns at all.
Okay, very good, thank you, sir. Vic, go, please.
I think I was just about on the opposite of what you were saying about the child, moving a child. My concern is the safety with kids running around in a yard where there's cranes and bulldozers and they want to play on a pile of dirt. I mean, I don't know, it just gets scary, that's all.
I understand, yep, I completely understand. I see the other side of the coin, Vic, I get it. Okay, Mr. Hauck, Mr. Metzger, any other further comment? Okay, any other questions from the board? Woody, would you like to opine at any time? I'd like now.
No, sir. I think it's a bold stipulation and want to look at it later in your deliberation time.
I understand. Okay, we'll handle.
Get to that later.
We'll, we'll handle Dan's concerns and Vic's. We'll handle all of that in deliberation. Is that okay, everybody? A little thumbs up? Okay, terrific.
I mean, Jeff, we may want to get Mike's input on this. I know he was a little concerned about granting temporary CO orders. So he was kind of said, there's no such thing as a temporary CO order, so. We may want to.
I saw, I saw that, Vic. I don't know what a temporary order is. I know what a temporary CO is, but I've never seen that word order. I, so I was confused by that. Quite frankly, I just thought that someone typed that by mistake. Never heard that.
Well, yeah, I don't know. He said there's, we had this big conversation that he felt there was no such thing as granting, you know.
I don't think there is in it.
That we're going to take it away in a year. Anyway.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, I can offer that the building office does have a temporary 30-day CO process that effectively allows use of a building while some things are still incomplete. And that could be the case here. Again, that's one of those stipulations we might look at later.
Okay, is that what's known as a temporary CO order? I mean, this is really a deliberation issue, so, yeah, go ahead, you can respond.
Yeah, that's what we had on quite a few occasions when something isn't quite complete, but it's safe to use. But there's, whatever, could be site work, could be some building code issue, it's not quite done.
Yep, understood, okay. Moving on, I think the board is good, so I'm going to ask, is there anybody in the public that would like to make comment on this application? And I don't see anybody or hear anybody, so I am now going to close this hearing. Thank you very much, Mr. Hauck and Ms. Metzger, thank you.
Thank you.
Clearly, my kitchen table isn't big enough for all this paperwork. AKA office, yeah, great. Okay, moving on to application 18, 2020. Hang on, sorry about that. Application 2000, excuse me, application 18, 2020, the application of Anthony Yell for the construction of a house roof overhangs and a rear landing with stairs and construction of a detached one-story garage for a property located at Two Oak Crest in Darien, Connecticut. Mr. Yell, good evening, sir, floor is yours.
Hello, I guess I'm hoping that you can turn over the screen to me. And then I just need to forewarn everybody that I did get the memo about 10 minutes. I kind of broke it, unfortunately, because I think that the narrative and the story that needs to be told about really what we're trying to do would be very difficult to be compressed into 10 minutes, so please bear with me if that's okay.
I understand what you just said, Mr. Yell, but I want you to know that your application, all materials have been submitted to the board. I have reviewed those materials in great length. I'm familiar with your architect's background. I'm familiar with Ms. Gestel's comments, Ms. Geiger's comments. Everything is part of the record. So if you have anything in addition to add, other than what's already made part of the record, I will yield the time to you, sir. But other than that, if it has to do with your architect's background and the historical nature of the international type of construction of your home, I think that's very well covered in your application materials. With that said, sir, I will, I will yield to you and let you go.
Thank you.
That was well said, Jeff, I totally agree with you. We've looked at this very carefully, we think we understand it. So I think that the issue is fairly simple for us to consider, fairly, yeah, so consider that when you address us.
Okay, I'm just now trying to get the deck to present. You handed over the screen to me, right?
Yes, I did.
Yeah, for some reason, I'm not being able to get the PowerPoint to present, so I'm wondering if you have access to it? We should just go from that.
Sure, we can do that.
Thank you. Okay, so as I mentioned, it is a little bit longer. I do want to reiterate a few things, just because I feel like they're valuable to do. But obviously, the ask is, obviously, we're getting in front of you guys to talk about specifically gaining variances for construction of roof overhangs, a rear landing, construction of a detached one-story garage. Could you go to the next slide, please? So to do that, I want to make sure that we cover a few of the elements that I think are important relative to the actual ask. So the first part would be context of the property, location, style and architecture. And then expression of the two options that we had available to us. One is actually not requiring any ZBA approval, and the other one is, which is what we're presenting today. And then specific details around the ZBA variance requests, which are focused on setback and coverage. So if you can move on to the next slide. So I'm the owner, I share the ownership with my wife, the architect is Andrew Collingham, he's actually on this call, too. And to get to this point, we consulted with various people, Woody, Marion and Liz Geiger, basically to make sure that we were following procedures and also developing something that was, had a high degree of architectural integrity. Can you move on? So context for the property, next slide. The property is at Two Oak Crest, it was built in 1957. It is actually part of an international style that was formed from 1922 to 1970. The architect is actually fairly influential, is Julian E. Kowski, next slide. The property is located off the corner of Oak Crest and Mansfield Avenue. It's actually made up of two 1/6 acre lots. When Oak Crest was deeded in 1930, the whole street was 1/6 acres. It's currently combined and was combined in 1969 to create a 1/3 acre lot. And it currently sits within a half-acre zoning. So you can see the property, its existing main structure and actually the buildable area against not requiring a ZBA in the half-acre zoning. Next slide. The piece in question that changes and is, I think, a big part of the discussion that we want to have is obviously the existing house, based on its architectural style, has very, very large roof overhangs, significant in terms of their scope and their square footage. On one end, it's eight feet, and on the front and the back, it's five feet. So it adds considerably to the overall square footage and coverage of the property. Can you move on to slide nine? So here you can kind of see, if you add up the existing house with the carport and the roof overhangs, we're effectively at 19.8% coverage. If you remove the roof overhangs, you get down to actual landlot coverage of 15.7 or 15.17. So significant coverage covered in the architectural ease. Next slide, please. So just a quick backdrop around international style, this is important, I want to just cover on these things just quickly. So international style was an architectural style that actually was formed by Philip Johnson, who actually did an awful lot of work in a town very close by, which is New Canaan. They kind of wrote the book, literally and figuratively, on really international style. If you move on to the next slide. I'm sure you're all familiar with this. This is a very famous architectural building that's based in New Canaan. This is probably one of the archetypes of international style and sort of sets the tone for really how you think about building a property that conforms to that approach. And this was actually designed by Philip Johnson in 1948. So next slide. There are many other houses that are significant, but you can start to see that there's an overall theme around how the houses are designed. Obviously, relative to the northeast region that we're in, these properties are fairly rare and unusual. But there is a long and loaded history, specifically in the northeast and Connecticut for these types of properties. Partly because you had the Harvard Five, partly because you had a lot of architects come out of Yale during that time period that were developing and exploring new materials and architectural styles. So very unlike a more traditional New England style. Keep going, next slide.
Okay, Mr. Yell, I am so sorry, sir, and I really hate to be the bad guy here, because I can clearly see how much time you put into this presentation. And on behalf of the board, I can tell you, we very much appreciate the time and effort you put into this. But we have reviewed these materials, I am very familiar with what you're presenting right now. What the Zoning Board of Appeals needs to understand is exactly what you are proposing to do with your property in particular, the hardships that surround your property in particular, and the construction that you want to do. If we can focus on that right now, that would be terrific. And if the board has any questions relative to international style and its significance to the town of Darien, and they are more than welcome to communicate and ask questions to Ms. Gestel or ARB's chairman, Elizabeth Geiger. But right now, I'm sorry, but I would really like you to focus on what you're proposing to do to the property and the hardships that surround that, please, sir. Thank you so much, I apologize for being a bad guy.
No, no, no worries, we were almost there anyway. So if you jump onto slide 19, we can jump into the variations that we looked. Okay, so basically, we had two paths, we're presenting both of these to you, because one option that we explored was not requiring any ZBA. And the other option, which was obviously represented, does require a ZBA. So move forward, next slide, keep going. Next slide. So this was the option, oh, back one. This was the option that we explored that doesn't require a ZBA. There is a specific location that we can place a garage using the existing square footage and coverage obtained from the demolition of the carport that allows us to place effectively what is a rather unsimilar box in a location that conforms to all the setbacks. In discussion with zoning staff, we decided that this wasn't commensurate to the style of the architecture of the main property and actually created a bit of an eyesore. So we decided to not further develop this idea, even though we can actually do this without requiring a ZBA approval. So if you go to the next slide. Keep going. Okay, next slide. So this is our proposed architecture and site plan. Here you can actually see the outline of where we would like to position the detached garage and also highlighting areas where we want to amend the existing roof overhangs and build a new landing on the rear to replace the one that was existing. If you go forward a couple of slides, you can see the highlighted areas. Oh, back one slide. Yep, so the red demarks the actual request for variances. Obviously, all of these impact both coverage and setbacks against the actual current existing zoning zone that the property sits in. To go forward one slide, how this would render from a look standpoint would be like this. So you can kind of see an architectural vision of the relationship between the detached garage and the existing property. To go forward another slide. You can kind of start to see that presentation and that relationship between those two objects. If you go forward one more slide. So to do that, obviously, there's two types of variances, the setback and coverage. We would need setbacks for the roof overhangs on the front of the house, as well as for the rear landing and stairs. And we'd also need setbacks for the detached garage, as well as coverage for the roof overhangs, rear landing and stairs, and the detached garage. So effectively, everything requires both setback and coverage variances. So move forward one slide. So to jump into the main house, I'll go through the specifics of this. Keep going. So as mentioned, with the removal of the carport, it opens up the side end of the house. And our idea here is to open that end up to mirror the basic visual presentation of the house, which is all glass on one end, and open up the rooms that are further down on that end of the house on the lower floor. To do that, we'd actually have to add in an architectural roof overhang on that end of about two and a half feet, as well as replace what was the rear landing, which at some point in its history was removed. Next slide. Here you can kind of see the bird's eye view of where those things are and the requirements for the various different setbacks. Keep going. Next slide. So let's jump into the detached garage. Next slide. So this is the actual plans and architecture for the actual detached garage. Here you can kind of see what we've done is we've mirrored the architectural style of the existing house, both in terms of its form, volume, roof overhangs, and also its pitch and roof design. So everything is a mirror of the main property. Next slide. So keep going. The next part of the question that I know was raised was specifically in the questions was its location. So here you can kind of see the existing carport, and then obviously our proposed front elevation where the carport's removed and the garage is in place. Next slide. The idea behind this, again, against the architectural style, so we're trying to follow principles that, and hopefully you guys are all familiar with, relative to that style, was about positive and negative volumes and that things are being sort of equal distance to one another. So effectively, what we did was we positioned the garage in a negative space that's equal to the positive volume of the main property. So that starts to define why the garage is where it is. If you move forward. Here you can also see the orientation, which also means effectively that we have to ask for some setback variations. Next slide. And then just the offset. This is driven primarily by a little bit of the plot form and shape, but also, again, by architectural principles. by architectural principles. Next slide. Obviously, what we would want to do is make sure that, you know, within those roof overhangs, we'd also consider its impact relative to the environment. So we have a plan for vegetation and landscaping to sort of work with it. Next slide. Next slide. Keep going. So here, again, you can kind of see the proposed building, the actual volume of the buildings, and the yellow dictates the matching roof overhangs, which is partly why we're requesting the setback variances and the coverage variances. Keep going. And here you can see the total percentages against the architectural plan that we're proposing. So if you choose to include the architectural overhangs, we would be at twenty-three point two-five percent. If you choose not to include the architectural overhangs, we're still at sixteen point two-seven off an original position of fifteen point seven. And then against setbacks, you know, based on the fact that we're in our half, we're not able to conform to the existing setbacks, but the whole property doesn't anyway. And so you can start to see some of the setback variances in the actual numbers that we're looking for that are based on the actual volume of the building against the large architectural roof overhangs. Next slide. So here you can kind of see a summary of the actual percentages that we're seeking to gain. So, you know, for the main house, roof overhangs, not main volume, twenty-four point six in lieu of the forty-foot minimum required against Oakcrest, for the rear landing, fourteen point nine in lieu of twenty-five minimum for the rear yard setback, and then the specific numbers against the detached garage. And then also the percentage against the total coverage. Again, you know, the variance being that the roof overhangs take up a considerable amount against an architectural style of coverage. And then the last few slides are just a reminder of how that overall site plan and architectural vision ties together. Thank you for your time. Sorry it took longer than.
That's good. It's not a problem, Mr. Yale. I really appreciate you doing the best you could to adhere to our time requirements. Thank you very much. I thank you. Didn't mean to be a bad guy, sir, but I just need to move things along. The board does, in fact, do their homework. So, you know, I read with quite interest, in fact, your materials in the packet. And I also note Ms. Castell's comment that your proposal was a piece of art, I believe the comment was, in her last sentence of her letter. Okay, pardon me. Questions from the board, please?
I have a question. The roof overhang, I understand counts as coverage, but is it volume or is it just the roof overhang? Talk about that.
It's just the roof overhang. So the volume of the property, the main property, is only twenty-five feet deep by forty-five feet long. It's a very small property, but it's got well over a thousand square feet in roof overhang because on one end you have eight feet plus the two five-feet front and back. It is a very significant part of that style, right? Cantilever eaves, projection eaves was part of it. So against the time period that it was made by the architect, it's sort of a significant piece of the overall vision. So when you think about the property sitting on the landscape, it's very, very small. We've done the math, and again, currently it's about fifteen point one. And with the new garage, not including the eaves, would be up to about sixteen point seven.
This is Chuck. I mean, I understand the historical and important architectural issues involved, and I'm sure we'll talk about those later. But tell me why, again, the garage has to be so far away from the house? You mentioned something about negative, negative space versus positive volume, but I didn't quite get that. So how far, how far is the garage from the house?
It's sixty-one feet.
And, you know, so it's closer to Mansfield than perhaps it would be if it were thirty feet. So why sixty-one and not thirty?
Okay, so there's a couple of, it's a great question. There's a couple of answers to that.
Well, I want to thank you for that, Anthony, for saying that I had a great question after seventeen years on the board. It's nice to know that finally, I have finally had a good question. Thank you.
No, look, man, you guys probe away. This is all part of the discussion, so I'm happy. So there's two answers to it. The first part is the orientation of the garage. The entrance is not off Oakcrest. You basically have to turn in from Oakcrest to drive into the garage. So we need turnback space from the garage before you hit the house. The other part is the bottom layer of the house, part of the idea of removing the carport was to open that up to mirror the glass volume on the upper layer and to allow those lower rooms to punch out into an open area. So we need a little bit of a landing area, a patio there, as well as the turnback area. So that sets certainly a minimum requirement. And then we looked and studied the architectural style a bit more significantly, and we did see that there was a way in which they were looking at the intersection of volumes that were about, you know, a master volume and a sub-volume being sort of divisionable. So, you know, we took that into consideration.
I mean, what would be the hardship to the applicants to move that ten or fifteen feet further towards the house? I mean, it's, I mean, this is all sort of above my pay grade, but I'm just trying to minimize, you know, the variance that you're seeking.
Yeah, yeah, no, I totally understand. Well, like I mentioned, there's certainly a bit of a buffer zone, you know, like there's certainly a bit of a buffer zone there in terms of like the needed space to be able to back out a car from the garage and turn it around to drive it back out onto Oakcrest. And then there's certainly a need to make sure that there's some grass space as you walk out of that lower part of the house, right? Now, we could certainly consider there's some flexibility there, but the other factor is there's also a couple of very mature trees that, you know, would plausibly get impacted negatively if we moved it too far back.
I mean, thirty yards, basically thirty yards is about as far as Mr. Williams can hit a wedge. I mean, a full swinging wedge. Jeff, admit it. I mean.
I admit it. It's true.
Obviously going to be part of the record, but it shouldn't. Okay, well, thank you. I mean, that's my main concern. I mean, Barbara and I and other people on the committee have worked hard, not hard, but we've worked enough to appreciate these historical issues involved in this. And, you know, obviously, we want to make some concession to maintaining the historical aspect of various, you know, properties in Darien. And then I'm not, I'm not at all opposed to this. I'm only wondering why we can't just put the garage closer and minimize, and minimize the variance that we're talking about.
Yes, it's effectively those three factors. The orientation of the garage and the space needed to back out cars, space needed to open up the lower part of the house, and then some matured trees. And then the third factor was architectural style against intersecting volumes and how they tended to do things relative to that specific style.
All right, thank you, Mr. Yale.
No, my pleasure.
Chuck. He checked when I'm muted, so I assume he's good. Dan, your mic came on. Please go.
Yeah, just a quick question. About the roof overhang variance, what's the minimum variance that you need without compromising the architectural, you know, design and aesthetic nature from a historical point of view that you are presenting? So what's the minimum overhang that you need? Or is that the minimum that you have proposed?
Yeah, we've requested the minimum. So we've not gone crazy. We've tried to look at the proportional value against the size of the garage and think of it as a sort of a miniature version of the house, right? Now, we could make the eaves shorter, but then they wouldn't look like the house, which is why we stopped with the first one, which was just a box, right? You have to have them, otherwise it feels like the two things were created at different points in time, which then starts to dilute the overall integrity. So we've set them at, they're also different on the garage. The facing ones are shorter than the side ones. So it's exactly the same proportion as the house. We've tried to take all of that into consideration, but we've got them at a minimum, you know, to be honest with you.
Okay.
But why does a homeowner want to have a garage that thirty yards, sixty feet away from the house? I mean, you come in, it's, I don't understand why that's, why that's what we should be approving and why they even want it. I mean, it just seems to me to be like so far away from where it should be, but maybe there's some reason architecturally, and maybe you can explain it one more time for me because I know you've said it already, and maybe you'll say it again. But I just want to try to understand why architecturally it's important to have the garage, you know, sixty feet from the house versus thirty feet from the house.
Yep. So let's just start from the architectural standpoint, right? So international style is about boxes, rectangular boxes. That's, you know, core design element of it. The glass house is a box. Most of the properties are boxes and certainly specifically rectangular forms. Now, the way in which they lay them out in the environment is about trying to create an intersection with the environment. If you cluster them too close together, they start to fight and create mass, which is really what you have with probably most of the houses around here. It's just a giant box sitting in an acre lot versus a series of architectural elements sitting within a landscape. So it's very important that you don't crowd the architectural elements, right? You have to spread them out so that they work with the sloping grade of the landscape, and each one sort of creates some sort of intersection point with each other. So architecturally, that's how the architects of that period thought about adding geometric shapes into, you know, more organic environments. Now, for us, you know, we love that, right? So like, it's not a concern that we would have to walk maybe a little further to get to a car or a garage, right? That's not a concern for us in the slightest, regardless of the weather conditions. Once you, once you, once you go beyond that architectural style, you have to look at the orientation of the garage. Its entrance is facing the house, not facing Oakcrest, because that's also a significant part of international style. So you have to drive in off Oakcrest and turn into it. So you've got to have that space to be able to turn into the garage. Then because we want to open up the bottom part of the house and have it tie into the top part of the house, which is a wall of glass effectively, we need some space there to have that punch out so you just don't walk out straight onto a driveway. So when we took all those into considerations, we started with the architectural principle and then looked at those other variables and said, this seems to be the most, you know, good place or position to land the detached garage.
All right, well, thank you very much. And I'm sure we'll talk about this during deliberations. Thanks.
No worries.
All right, thank you, Chuck. Any bar, please go. Yep.
Anthony, I am a huge fan of what you're trying to do. I think it takes so much effort to preserve these kind of homes. The easy thing to do is lop the garage on, ignore architectural style. Having said that, we don't have a variance that we can fall back on that allows us to grant this based on architectural style. We're trying. That's some of the discussion we're having ongoing. If you put the garage where it meets setbacks and does not require a variance, does it compromise the architectural integrity of this home? I understand function. I understand you want to clear the driveway and all that stuff. The integrity of the architectural design.
Yeah, it puts it, it puts it really close to the house tucked up in the back corner. Like, there is a space for us to put a box, but, you know, it just destroys the property, to be honest with you.
It's the positive, negative space you talked about.
Yeah, effectively. Yeah, I mean, like I said, I mean, like, you know, we had that option. It doesn't, you know, it's not a particularly effective option.
There wouldn't be any. All right, I get it. I get it.
Okay, everybody, all right? Okay. Let's review, if we can, the hardships once again, real quickly, Mr. Yale. Can you, can you go through that quickly for me again, please?
The hardships are effectively setbacks and coverage, you know, against a half-acre zone for a property that was built in the nineteen fifties.
Jeff, I think this is the ultimate case where we have to consider whether or not we are going to allow certain variances that may not meet regulations and certain variances that may not meet the hardship conditions for historical or architecturally important homes. So I see Barb shaking her head and.
Now I.
And it'll be an interesting discussion when we go into.
Yes, it will be. And I think that the timing of the formation of the historical subcommittee that I created a couple of months ago is the timing is really quite interesting, isn't it, ladies and gentlemen?
Well, Jeff, you are the father. You are the father. You are the father of this whole situation. You realize that.
He can't swing a golf club, but he has wisdom.
Yeah, listen, if you jinx me, DeLuca, I'm going to call you on Monday. I got my three-day men's member guest starting tomorrow, so please don't start with me, okay? Sorry, I digress there, Mr. Yale. I apologize.
Well, to wit, to wit, I'm in Kitchard right now on a golf vacation, so I'm hopeful that we can do this quickly. And I appreciate what Mr., what Mr. Yale has said, and I totally get what Barbara has said with our subcommittee, and I think it's a very worthy conversation we're going to have in a few minutes.
Yes, agreed, sir. Are there any other comments, questions, or concerns from board members? Okay. I would like to point out that I very much appreciate the Darien historian of many years, Marion Castell, joining us this evening. Thank you, Marion. And Elizabeth Geiger, the chairman of ARB, thank you also for joining us tonight. Your letters, if you will, in the application packet have been reviewed, and I very much appreciate your thoughts and your comments. Thank you very much. We greatly appreciate your efforts.
Excuse me, when we make a comment now as a public.
Yes, of course, of course, absolutely. I was going to the public, but I just wanted to thank you. Go ahead.
No, all right. I just wanted to say, and one comment, this is a work of art, is how I ended it. And what I'm saying, design is not convenience. And design is not massing together. You get design because you have space and you have certain balances that please the eye. And so I wanted to say that the past and future architectural aesthetics of Darien depend on the integrity of well-recognized styles. There are not that many of them, but when you have them and you can recognize them, I wanted to point out that it all is in your hands. It is in the ZBA's hands to create a variance, to allow this. And this means eighteenth century, nineteenth century, twentieth, twenty-first century buildings that might have a very particular, special aspect that might need some sort of a variance. But it is designing houses. These variances are, is basically a house design. And I think that, I think you have to understand that the future aesthetics of Darien really lies in your hands and in your decisions. And I think it's an important thing to know and to become familiar with some of the very important styles, one of which we saw today, but we have others also. And Woody has a book about these styles within the town of Darien, and they're all clearly represented, and they're clearly described as what is in each of these styles. And it starts at the eighteenth and goes all the way through the international style to the present. And it's a good reference book, just to keep in the back of your mind that you have in the office. All right, thank you. All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, Marion. We really, we really, really appreciate everything you've done for the town of Darien over the, all these years. Thank you. Uh, Elizabeth, would, would you, no, I mean that sincerely. I really do. I really do. Elizabeth, would you like, ah, there you go. Elizabeth, would you like to make any comment?
I would, if that's okay.
I'm good.
Of course.
I think these are issues.
I'm sorry, Vic. Vic, I'm, I apologize. I was, I was referring to, to Elizabeth Geiger. I apologize. I'll get back to you in a second.
Okay.
Elizabeth, go ahead, please.
Thanks, Jeff. It's good to be talking directly to the godfather himself, apparently. Um, uh, I have to report what Marion said. Marion says things so poetically, it's hard to kind of come after her. But I, I second what she said, and I also want to bring up your point that Chuck said. He said, you know, he kept going back to the argument about, you know, why the exact positioning of the garage. Um, if you guys pull up slide thirty-seven of Mr. Yell's presentation, I think he is so familiar with this. Let me call out something that maybe you guys glossed over that is significantly important. If you look at slide thirty-seven, it talks about positive and negative space. If you add up those positive spaces, the total volume, the whole, like the length, you take a ruler and measure how long they are and you measure how long those negative space are, you can see that the Yells, very importantly, placed the garage at a distance that made the layout of the land and the architecture a piece of art together. Shifting it over fifteen feet from the house, thirty feet from the house, it takes away from that key architectural aesthetic style. The specific placement from an architectural perspective is essential. And not only that negative space, but the fact that they've rotated and they've created the intersection of where the garage ends meets the house at its midway point. When you're looking at that piece of property as a key architectural piece of art, it is laid out exactly as it should be and how it would be in that international style if it was being done today. I don't know if that helps, but, um, I wanted to touch on that point, if that clarifies anything for you guys. And, and then Chuck, and you said it awfully well, like, um, about setting a precedent here or, or, you know, you know, this is, it goes into your, your further conversation about historical variances. Jeff, you said earlier, we don't make history, we don't set precedents, we make history. Here you go, boys. Make some history.
I, I hate when my words come back and bite me in the.
You know what? I would, if I closed my eyes, I would not know who was talking, whether it was Barb or Elizabeth Geiger. It's amazing.
It's my sister.
Utterly amazing. Honest to God. But you both make good points. You know, I think we all appreciate the historical significance of structures in Darien. I mean, I have a house on three two nine Middlesex Road, which was built in eighteen oh six. You know, I'm selling it and it's frankly been sold, but you know, it's been a joy in our lives. And I think Darien should make every effort, uh, through both the Historical Society, the Architecture Review Board, as well as the zoning Board of Appeals and the Planning and Zoning, uh, uh, Commission to maintain these structures as best they can. But, um, this is something I think we're going to talk about soon, Woody, because I sent a memo not recently about it. So Liz, it's good to see you.
Yeah, I want to, I just have to chime in. It touches me deeply that someone would take this energy and effort to preserve a home like this. I mean, this is what makes a town special. And when you get someone like Marion and Liz to put all, I mean, they spent hours and hours on these kinds of projects. I, I really commend you, you all. And we struggle because, you know, the precedent and the history of zoning is very specific. You know, we can't grant a variance unless you demonstrate a specific hardship. But I think we've all talked about this at great length, like shouldn't there be a historic hardship? Shouldn't there be an architectural hardship? So it's a side discussion we're going to have, but I think this, this presentation makes that case beautifully. I commend Mr. Yell and everyone who's participated in this. I don't know where the board's going to go with it, but I really think it's, it's lovely what you're doing on the home.
Yeah, but can I say one of the things? The Williams?
Yes.
So part of that letter, I guess, just noted, everyone who looked at this property before the Yells were builders who would demolish this. And this is the trend we're going with, you know? No one recognized these sites, these houses are a pain in the butt to do work on. It's easier just to demolish them and start clean. So when you do find people who put the time and effort in, this is not a small task. It's not a cheap task. I think, um, we need to do what we can as a town to support them. So that's my last thing. Sorry.
It's honestly not even a convenience. Like when you look at where they've positioned the garage, it's not even convenient for the homeowner. They're actually taking the hit to preserve the architecture.
Okay. All right.
We get it.
Yeah. Yes, we do. Yes, we do. Uh, okay. With that said, thank you again, ladies. I, we really, really appreciate your input. Uh, with that said, uh, any other comments, questions or concerns from board members? I believe Vic, your mic is on.
I know. I was just going to say, not me. I'm good.
You're good. Okay, fine. All right. So I'm, I'm good with the board. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to be heard on this application?
Yeah, I just want to say something. My name's Andrew Collingham. I'm the architect on the project. Um, I've been pretty quiet tonight, uh, because he and his wife Kim have been, uh, very passionate about this project and they've kind of taken the lead. They put that whole presentation together, which was quite extensive and a lot of work, to be frank. I just wanted to reiterate the point that they could build a garage as of right without any variances. It would look probably terrible, uh, when viewed along with the house. Um, and it's not so often that I have a client who goes above and beyond to spend the money and the time to do this project, uh, to preserve the architectural integrity and style of their house. So I think that speaks volumes on them and the pride that they have in their property. So again, they could build something as of right. It wouldn't look the best, but they care to the point that they're here tonight and putting the effort. So.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Everybody. Appreciate the time.
We appreciate your time as well, and, and I think the board would tend to agree with you at this point. Thank you very much. Any other comment from the public?
Mr.?
I will take the, yes, please go ahead, Woody.
Hey, hi. Um, there's a fairly significant, uh, list of possible stipulations, uh, for this project.
I see that.
Let me first mention, let me first mention in the research, this was interesting. Nineteen ninety-four, the ZBA actually approved a prior owner's makeover of this house with a second floor. Unlike what we've heard a lot of tonight, the previous owners apparently didn't appreciate the style, didn't like it, wanted to change it completely to a more traditional or something else. Um, so this is kind of a rare exceptional circumstance we have. So we have a list of, I don't know, six or eight different possible stipulations here. Um, whether you want to discuss any of these with the applicant now or do it later under deliberation, up to you.
Uh, I, I want to do that in deliberation. Uh, that's, that's, that's my sense of it, because I, I've read through these, uh, stipulations and, and a lot of them, uh, I, I think will be obfuscated. So I, it's, it's my, yeah. Yeah, no, I'm going to do it in deliberations. Is the board okay with that? Has the board reviewed, if the board has, has in fact reviewed the possible stipulation, is the board okay if I review that in deliberations?
Uh, speaking for Chuck, the answer is yes.
Okay. Okay. So I got a yes, yes, Vic. I got three, four, yes. I got five, yes. It's done. Okay. Is there any other comments, questions or concerns? Okay. I'll take that as a no. Thank you everybody so much for your time and effort and, uh, and presentation tonight. And, uh, Mr. Yell, we greatly appreciate, on behalf of the board, and I am speaking on behalf of the board, we greatly appreciate the effort and time you've taken, uh, on this project. Thank you very much. This hearing is now closed. Thank you. Okay, everybody go on mute, please. Chuck, go on mute.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right. Uh, we are done, uh, with this hearing. We are going to move to deliberations. I would remind the public, uh, and the applicants that you are not allowed to comment during deliberations, but you're certainly more than welcome to stay online and, uh, and listen to what we have to say, but you're not, uh, able to make comments at this point. If you go offline and you'd like to know what decision that we make, you're more than welcome to call staff tomorrow and ask, uh, as to the, uh, uh, find out what the, what we decided. Okay? All right. Everybody okay? Everybody good? Something's up? Good. Okay. Uh, let's go to Lucille's story on Raymond Height. I mean, come on, this could have been done administratively. Does anybody have any problem with this?
Dude, I, I make a motion to accept.
Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I, ah, Dan had it, had his hand up first. You lose. Uh, so I have a first, I have a motion by Mr. DeLuca, second by Dan. All in favor? That's five zips, Woody. Uh, I'm going to, I'm going to Brown. We're going to Brown, right? At twenty-six Peach Hill? I believe so. Okay.
Can I just speak, can I speak to this for a second? I mean.
Yeah, I knew you would. So come on, man. Let me have it.
I'm, I'm, I'm in Cape Cod with a bunch of guys on a golf trip. So this is like the last thing I want to do is like sit down and talk about this. But, 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 you know, I have voted against this every single time it's come up. And I'm having a hard time, you know, now changing my vote only because it's convenient, you know, for the applicants. Uh, this is a eight thousand square foot house. Think about that for a second. Um, why are we going to allow an exception to, you know, not an exception, but, but I mean, why are we going to allow a, a, a variance for the construction of an eight thousand square foot house when we've denied it in the past for smaller homes? Uh, and what is the rationale for granting a variance on something like this? And the only thing I can think of is COVID nineteen. And my last comment before I sign off on this is that after seventeen years, precedent does matter. You know, I mean, Vic's been there for eight, for, for as many as me and just been there as maybe even more than me. But I hate that people come back and say, you know, well, you've done this in the past, you know, ergo, you should do it now. And I don't like when that happens. Um, my suggestion is that if you're going to grant this, it's got to be based upon COVID and nothing else. Because otherwise you'll never be able to deny another one.
I, uh, you, you know, Chuck makes a good point, you know, and everybody heard me talk about precedent. So, uh, and he makes a good point. And I had a conversation with staff earlier today about his point being, you know, how big is this house? Eight thousand square feet. Well, do the math, everybody. Okay? Times three fifty, four hundred a foot, do the math. So yes, the apartment rental business right now is sky high and they'll have a little bit of a problem and they're going to, you know, pay whatever to relocate. But, you know, of course, financial issues, hardships are not a hardship. We all know that. So look, comments from the other question, comments and questions from other board members? Let's get a feeling from everybody else. Dan, I see your mic is on.
Yeah, no, I'm, I'm in agreement with Chuck. I think the, the COVID situation coupled with special need for their, for their, for their, for their child. And, uh, uh, you know, I, I, I think those two are compelling reasons to allow, you know, for us to allow them to stay. Maybe we can make stipulation, you know, in, uh, when they get this, the certificate of occupancy, that they demolish the old property, but, uh, you know, but I think a, as a principle, I think I'm, I'm okay for, for us to move forward and give them the variance.
Okay. I, I understand your comment. I, I think I just want to make sure everybody's clear on Chuck's comment. I, I, I believe where Chuck is coming from, he's, he's having difficulty with approving this variant because, you know, it's, it's co, it's, it's COVID or nothing. It's like all or nothing. The special needs thing personally, I think that comes into play as well. Um, but, but, you know, these are very odd times. So I, I, I appreciate so much what Chuck is saying. I, I really do. I, I'm totally on the fence, just in case anybody wants to know. So somebody convinced me one way or the other. Chuck, your mic is on. Whoops, it's off now.
Jeff, I voted against this on Middlesex, uh, you know, up, up near Ox Ridge, because I didn't like the idea of two houses on one lot. There seems to be like, in my mind, a, I mean, you can't do this. If you, if you live on a small lot, you can't do this. Right? I mean, it's only people who live on big lots who can construct big houses, who are allowed to do this. Um, you know, there's no reason in my mind why somebody can't get a rental. And, you know, and, and not have, rather than have two lots on one house, I mean, there's, I, I have to have some reason why I'm, perhaps my last vote, that I would allow this. Because I've never voted in favor of this before. I mean, I get, I get it. I get it. I mean, I know, like, there's lots of reasons why they don't want to. I mean, I totally get that. But our job is not to consider those things. Our job is, is to consider whether or not there's been a hardship. And my view, as harsh as it may seem, for which I almost apologize that I shouldn't, but I do, is, is I, I just don't see a hardship. So.
Understood.
I'm done.
I understand.
I'm done.
I understand. I got it. Thank, thank you, Chuck. Uh, Barb and Vic, Barb, ladies first, please. Comments, questions? Comment?
Every time I think I have made a decision, I listen to Chuck and he's the voice of reason. You know, he, Chuck, I mean, he has both the legal perspective and the history of being on this board for so long. You know, if I were coming into this decision cold, I would probably look at this case individually and say, COVID, difficult rental market, special needs, but the reality is that those don't apply in our case. We can't make a case for that. That isn't a hardship. I am sympathetic and I don't, I am also on the fence about this. I hear Chuck's argument and I think this is going to open up floodgates of trouble if we start approving this stuff. There are specific reasons why we don't grant it. You know, one is that it doesn't apply across the board, the other is safety. Um, you know, and, and I think the only argument I can potentially make is that when you combine the two houses, it doesn't exceed coverage. So I've been playing with that idea. I know that you're big on home in the space coverage. That's the only thing I keep coming back to, but then Chuck makes the point about the two kitchens. So I, I am struggling with this and I, I, I don't like the idea of caving just because of COVID. I think there are solutions. Every time we have forced somebody to be more creative with their solutions, they have found a better outcome. We deny this stuff all the time and people come back with better homes and better designs. So I.
Okay, yeah.
I'm leaning toward that.
Understood. Vic, comments?
Um, like I said in the meeting, I have strong safety concerns about this. I don't think they've done enough to protect the, to isolate the existing house from the building, the buildable one. I wouldn't park dump truck by the existing house. So that's my concern.
Yep, understood. Okay. I think I know where we're going on this. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna, uh, geez, I don't think I've done this for a while. I'm gonna ask for a motion, or I'll make a motion, to deny the application.
May I? May I, Jeff?
Yes, yes, yes. In fact, I would appreciate that. Thank you, sir.
Because I indicated I might make a motion tonight. Uh, I'm going to make a motion to deny this application.
May I have a second, please? May I have a second, please? Do I have a second?
I'll, I'll second it.
Okay. All in favor of denying this application? Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. I'm going to abstain, because that's how on the fence I am. So I'm abstaining, but it doesn't matter, because we have three negatives, or three noes, whatever, okay? Dan, you wanna say yes, no, or abstain?
Um, I would say no. I mean, I, I'm, I'm, I'm in favor of allowing, uh, you know, the variance, so I would be no against the vote.
Understood. So that, how do I say this, Chuck? Three noes, one aye.
One aye.
And one, uh, right? Yeah. Chuck, turn on your mic, Chuck.
Yeah, it's, it's 3-1-1.
3-1-1, yeah, there you go. Thanks, Chuck.
One in favor and an abstention.
Yeah, yep, exactly. Uh, that's, because I was on the fence, you guys, so I just abstained. Um, that was an interesting vote, Chuck. We, I don't think we've ever, I swear to goodness, in 18 years, I don't think we've ever had 3-1-1. Swear to goodness, I don't think so. In any event, I think we did the right thing there, you guys, so thank you very much. No, I really do. I think we did the right thing. I, I think, I, I do. I don't need to say why. I think you guys know why. Uh, okay, uh, moving on to Yell at 2 Oak Crest. I, I mean, I don't have the paperwork in front of me, but I'm doing a pretty good job, so. Uh, Yell at 2 Oak Crest. Uh, Chuck, would you mute? Would you mute, Chuck? Thanks, bud. Okay, okay. Questions, comments, concerns about Yell at 2 Oak Crest?
I have, I have a question. Are we on, are we on solid legal ground to grant variances based on historical significance and design? I mean, is, is it, are we going against what the state statutes are, or is any, anything like that? I mean, to Darien create a design variance? I don't know.
Well, I think it's...
I don't think, I don't think we are. I think we have a sort of a policy that we are going to have sort of a relaxation of our regulations in favor of historical, historical applications.
Yeah, I will, uh, Vic, I'm gonna defer that question about Chuck and Barb, because, you know, they're on that historical subcommittee, which I believe part and parcel their charge is, you know, do we create some type of hardship for historical preservation of homes? Right, Barb? And aren't I saying that correctly? No, Barb, I'm not saying that correctly.
I'm on that committee too, and, uh...
Oh, you, oh, I apologize, Vic. Yeah, go ahead. Please, I'm sorry, I didn't know that.
Our charge was to come up with criteria that indicate what is a historical house. It's not, wasn't to...
Okay, all right.
But, 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 Vic, I don't think we're gonna do that tonight.
No, of course not.
No, we're not gonna do that tonight. We're not.
I think the question is, are we gonna grant this particular variance? Uh, and I mean, based upon what we heard and everything that this committee has talked about, that we'll talk about later, I mean, I mean, I think this isn't like a no-brainer. I mean, I, I think we have to conserve what we have in Darien, and hopefully future owners will as well.
My sense of what Chuck just said was, he, he's positive on this. Um, is that right, Chuck? I mean, you think we should conserve, and, yeah.
Oh, my God, yeah.
Because I agree with you. Yeah, I, I agree with you 100%. I, I mean, I think they've done a great job. I think it looks great. I mean, I get it, 61 feet from the house. I would never build a garage 61 feet from my house, but I think that's part and parcel of the effort to, to keep, keep the architecture. And I, and listen, don't anybody misunderstand me. I totally appreciate the historical nature and the background of his architect and everything like that, but it's a little unfair for us to spend a couple hours reading through all of the materials and then listening to it again on, uh, on TV. So I, I apologize again to Mr. Yell, uh, Mr. Yao, but, um, you know, we do our homework for a reason, and, uh, and that, and that's why. So, uh, with that said, uh, any other comments or questions or concerns from the board?
Uh, no. Jeff, totally no concerns. I totally agree with everything you said, and I'm gonna make a motion that I hope is important, is that, is that every, i- is that in this particular situation, that with respect to the historical aspects and the act, and the architectural aspects of this particular home, and for the reason that the Darien zoning Board of Appeals hopes to, uh, uh, use all of their efforts to maintain as best they can the historical aspects of Darien, that we grant this application notwithstanding the variance is requested because and only because of the historical reasons why we should. Thank you.
Very well said, Chuck. Uh, that was terrific. Thank you very much. Yeah, I, I applaud that. Thank you, buddy.
I love it. I love it, Chuck. I love it.
Yeah.
I wanna second this. You know how I feel about this. This is a passion point for me.
Barb has, Barb has to second this.
I, I'm seconding.
Yeah, I, I get that. Okay, so to, to, to be official, um, did I go to the public for co-, uh, for comment? I don't think I have yet, have I?
Yeah.
I have? Okay, fine. So no, no, I'm not sure. Is there any other public comment? Let me just double check.
We, we closed...
Okay, good.
We closed the hearing previously, so you don't have to worry about that.
Oh, right. What am I talking about? Yeah, I'm sorry. Chuck did such a great job in his speech, he totally threw me off. All right, so Chuck, being, getting back to being official, what Chuck said is going to be interpreted as a motion to approve, okay? Then I have a second. Yes, thank you, Chuck. Then I have a second from Barb Hazelton. All in favor?
Uh, Mr. Chairman?
I'm good.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, hang on, hang on, yeah, okay, Woody, go ahead.
If you don't mind.
Oh, you wanna do stipulations? Nope, you wanna do stipulations?
Yeah, there's a couple of very significant things here.
Oh, wow.
For instance, what happens if this house is torn down in the future? For whatever reason.
Okay, listen, I, I, I understand. Let, let me, okay, I know where you're going, Woody, and I get it. So I'm gonna take five minutes, and I'm gonna go through these stipulations that you have listed in staff questions. Um, and what I'd like to do, please, anybody step on me at any time, what I'd like to do is, I'm gonna read through them very quickly. If you think it's a stipulation that's applicable to this application, then say yes, put up your thumb, or whatever. Otherwise, I'm gonna move on, okay? Because as an example, if the house, okay, I'm gonna start with number B, so excuse me. That's only because, because Woody started there. If the house is removed in the future and granted variance, and, and the granted variance is avoided, should the garage structure also be immediately removed? Does anybody think because they ripped down the original house, they should rip down the garage as well? No.
Negative.
Barb's saying, negative. That, Woody, B is out, okay? Going back to A. ZBA variance is a granted with the understanding that the proposed garage and modify the house should be preserved as planned. True, I agree with that. Any future changes to either structure, roofline, door, window patterns, shall further be reviewed? A, A is approved. Sorry, I didn't go to ZBA members on that, but I proved it. Yeah, thank you. Excuse me. A is approved. C, the portion of the back patio, eight feet minimum step back space, shall be permanently removed and that area properly landscaped prior to the issue of project construction zoning permit. I think we'll all agree to that. C is accepted. D, there should be no fencing of any kind installed in the future within the Oak Crest right away or front back step back, excuse me, or front step back space. Same along Mansfield? I don't care. Who cares about D? And anybody...
Let me speak, Jeff, 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 let me speak to that. So this is on Mansfield, and, um, um, we have a, like, a four-foot, a four-foot regulation, Woody, right? In terms of the height of fences that can be, like, on a street. I mean, and, and I totally know it's been violated many times, but other times, we've insisted that people before us would have a four-foot fence, and I think four-foot fence is like what it should be, but, 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 um, I just wanna make sure that if they're gonna ins-, uh, construct a fence on Mansfield, that it, that is less, that is four feet, right? Isn't that appropriate?
Okay, so what Chuck is saying, that, um, if in fact any fencing is installed, it can't exceed the regulation of four feet. That's what he's saying.
I agree.
Woody's, Woody's, well, I do too, of course, but Woody is saying no fencing of any kind. Do we care?
I'm okay with fencing, as long as they adhere to the, to the restrictions.
Yeah, it's definitely, it's gotta adhere to the restrictions, for sure.
Yeah, and it's, but it's, but it's provided for in the zoning regulations. Four feet or, or it's out of regulations. I'm crossing out D, that's gone. E, there should be no future expansion or enclosure of the back landing and steps? Well, yeah, we all agree with that. But, I mean, somebody step on me if I'm wrong. E is accepted. F, the existing oak crest front parking area and drainage pipe shall be removed and properly landscaped with public works, street opening permit prior to issuance project construction zoning permit. No, it, it doesn't need to be done prior to the, to the construction zoning permit, but it certainly needs to be done prior to the issuance of a certificate of occupancy. I agree that that parking area needs to be removed, as well as the pipe, but I don't believe it needs to be removed before the construction permit is issued. I think it needs to be removed and landscaped before the CO is issued. I'm thumbs up with that. And everyone's good with that? Woody, you got it? If I'm going too fast, let me know. A detailed professional tree planting screening, planting screening shall be prepared prior to the issuance project construction zoning. You know, he talked about trees being planted. I, I'm on the fence on this, couldn't care less. Barb, Chuck, Dan?
I don't think it's appropriate. I say no.
I don't care. You care? Anybody care about this? Vic, you care? Nope, that's out. G is out. H, a professional lighting plan is recommended to highlight the distinctive building features. I don't really even understand that comment. I don't think that, that's required. The garage and house structure shall not have exterior lights of any kind that create light and glare trespass beyond property line. Well, yeah, I mean, I agree with that. All right, H, does anybody think that we need a professional lighting plan that's recommended to highlight the distinctive building features? No, I don't, nope, nope, H is out. So Woody, what's being accepted by the board here right now is A, C, and E, and that's it. Questions, comments, or concerns about that discussion on Yell?
No, negative, but Jeff, you're running a great meeting.
Thank you, sir. I'm trying to get both of us on the golf course as early as possible, sir. I probably shouldn't have said that.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay, okay.
You also talked about number F a little bit, and accepted part of the...
I left. About... Hang on, I, I apologize. F, F, F. Oh, I apologize, Woody. You, you're absolutely 100% correct. Just change F is prior to the certificate of occupancy, not the construction period. Just, 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 just make sure it's done when they're done constructing. Otherwise, they're gonna tear it up. They're gonna run vehicles over there. No, just leave, let, let them have it, but when they're done construction, make sure it's done, and then give them a CO, okay? All right. Questions, comments, or concerns about that application and our conversation? All right, awesome. So we're done, we're done with these three applications. Sorry, I didn't think it would go this long. I thought it'd get done in an hour.
Mr. Chairman?
With all due respect, yep.
I don't think we got to a vote. Yeah, I don't think we got to a vote on that. We got Chuck ma- making the motion to approve, Barb the second, and then we went through all those possible steps.
No, thanks, Woody. Thank you, thank you very, thank you very much, Woody. No problem. Okay.
So, I'm not sure who made the motion, but if it were mine, I would include all of those stipulations as part of my motion.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. George.
The stipulations that we just cited, A, B, E, right? Correct?
Exactly.
Okay, Woody, do you understand what Chuck just said? Shake your head. Yes, okay, good. So everybody understands that Woody, I'm sorry, that everybody understands that Chuck just made part and parcel of the motion, the stipulations that we just went through, some of which we eliminated, one of which we modified, and some of which we deleted, okay? I have a motion to approve from Chuck DeLuca. I have a motion from Barb Hazelton as the second. And all in favor? Everybody good? That's five zip. Thank you, everybody. Okay. I'm working hard over here, you guys. All right, now, in, in the, with all due respect, um, to the board and our charge as a board, uh, between last week's rather lengthy meeting and this week coming upon two hours, I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn. Um, I understand previous business. Now, I, I will, I will withdraw that if Chuck, DeLuca, and Barb would like to opine briefly, and I, and I really, I really defer to Chuck, because it's his last night, so Chuck, if you would like to opine and take a few minutes to talk about the memo that was sent out about the historical subcommittee, I, sir, I yield the floor to you. Completely your call.
You know, Jeff, I totally appreciate that. Thank you very much. And I'm somewhat wistful about this, since I've been here 17 years, as I'm sure, you know, Vic and Jeff will be, when they decide that they're no longer gonna participate. Um, I sent an email...
Only, excuse me, sir, excuse me, sir, that's only gonna be the case if someone knocks on my door and buys my house without it being on the market.
Which, in fact, so, just so you all know, the only reason I'm leaving is because my house was purchased, and it wasn't even on the market. But, uh, there were certain people who liked it and made an offer that, uh, was such that, Dawn and I, uh, decided that, uh, we would accept. Um, and I know Woody has been there many times, uh, and appreciates, appreciates the property. Um, but, you know, with respect to, uh, my memo, which I sent to Woody, and the historical stuff, I mean, I, I really think that, that, you know, Barb is on to something here. And, 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 you know, I think it's gotta be refined a little bit, you know? I don't think that, you know, the ZBA should have a member on this, uh, you know, sort of this informal committee that talks to people about what they should do with their homes. But, I mean, I think that if, if some time is put into it, and, you know, I think that something could come of it. I think there's some reason to have a historical, uh, you know, issue about, you know, I mean, I mean, we did this tonight, we did it a couple weeks ago in, in Prospect, that, you know, historical homes, we should have some flexibility with, uh, whether that should be a regulation from this, from the PMZ, or whether or not it should have a, be some kind of informal policy or formal policy with, um, ZBA. I'll leave, I'll leave to you. Um, but I do wanna say this, before I sign off, uh, about how much I've enjoyed being with all of you and your non-partisanship about these issues, and about the professionalism that the staff has provided to us for 17 years. Woody should be commended for what he's done for all of these years. He truly does. The fact that he would come to my house on a Friday at 6 o'clock and drop off a package... and drop off a package of papers and then drive two hours to his house. You can't forget that. He is a true, true treasure for the town of Darien. So, has I leave to go to, not Norwalk? Going to Silvermine? That's what the Realtors tell me. I'm not going to Norwalk, I'm going to Silvermine. So I, I wish you all the best.
Thank you so much, Chuck. We really, really appreciate it, and I will tell you that my parents lived in Silvermine uh, for quite a number of years, and it's a beautiful place, and, and I know that the board will, I, I speak for the board when I say best of luck to you and Dawn, and we really hope to see you soon. And maybe someday we can all get together at Chuck's when this whole thing is over. Not Chuck, excuse me, that was a, that was a Freudian slip. We can get together at the goof, and, uh, I was at Chuck's the other night, you guys, up in Darien, but we can get together at the goof, um, and, and, and relive some good times. Uh, with that, Chuck, I would very much appreciate, uh, you taking the honor of making a motion to adjourn if you think pleased, sir.
Oh, that is so awesome. I move to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Sadly, I'll second it. We're gonna miss you, Chuck. You're so great. Thank you.
Awesome. Ciao.
Thank you, buddy. All in favor of adjournment? Thank you, everyone. Really appreciate it. Have a super weekend. Take care. Bye-bye.